The March 7th, 2016, regular schedules, school board meeting in Robertson County in the upcoming quarter. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices and join me in a moment of silence. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can that be seen?
We are very happy tonight. It has Joe Barnes High School represented. Ms. Jenkridge takes English as building and she's going to tell us a little bit about the students that she brought here tonight.
All of my students here today are with my advanced junior English class. We have Mary Grace Goins, Kaylee Pickett, Claudia Dickerson, Aleah Wicks, and Jacob Holt. Many of them are in youth leadership and student council, and we were happy to come here tonight with fledge.
Give him a hand, please. They will each receive a certificate and a little gift thanking them for being with us tonight. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, would you please read our mission and vision statements?
Students and their achievement must be the focus of our every meeting, our every plan, our every decision. Mission and vision statements of the Robertson County Schools as to mark expressions of what we believe and what we expect. We believe our mission is to ensure each student is prepared to succeed in life. Our vision is that Robertson County Schools will enable all students to reach and see high academic and career standards while empowering them to succeed in a technologically advanced and culturally diverse society.
Thank you. Board members, you have before you tonight an agenda. Please, your pleasure. Motion to approve on Mr. Crockett, the second one, Mr. White. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approval, make it known by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion passed. We will move to recognition of student, teacher, and school achievements.
We have several tonight to recognize. We have students as well as faculty. I would like to start off tonight by recognizing two coaches from Wyeth House Heritage High School who was awarded a award this season from T double S double A. Assistant coach, Mr. Scott Ballard, if you'll come forward. And head coach of Wyeth House Heritage High School, T double S double A Coach of the Year, Mr. Pat Bradley.
Want to give a speech there? Come.
Next, we would like to recognize some students. I would ask for Dr. Brad Bell to come forward. We're having students to recognize from his school. Two of his scholars, Ashley Gass, that she'll come forward, and Grant Donkin, if he'll come forward. Standing here by Dr. Bell. Each of these students entered the DAR essay contest in the Charlotte Robertson Chapter of Dollars of the American Revolution. Ashley won at state level, and Grant won on the regional level. So, give them a hand.
If you'd like to say something?
I would love to. Obviously, I'm beaming with pride for our two scholars here, Grant and Ashley, are in the STEM and RE program at Springfield Middle School, which of course, we're going to be moving to a magnet program next year. And this is an example of just some of the extraordinary young people that we have at Springfield Middle School. I couldn't be prouder of Ashley winning the state of Tennessee. And her sister Emily was a regional winner last year as a sixth grader, and Ashley has won the state as a seventh grader. And Grant, and it is awkward calling someone else Grant, I'm not gonna grant. And he has won the region for this year, and I expect more of the same next year. And I do expect more of the same of this type of extraordinary achievement through our scholars at Springfield Middle School in the coming future. I'm very proud of each of them.
Next, we would like to recognize a student from Joe Barnes High School. Is there a question or a question from Joe Barnes that came with the student? Ms. Jenkridge, if you'll come back up. Aleah Wicks, if you will come up, please, and stand by her teacher. Now, I have written a little something about you. Alicia Wicks is the daughter of Jeremy Wicks and the granddaughter of Roxanne Morris Adams. She was elected to attend the 2016 Tennessee Governor's School for Humanities, which will be held June 5th, 2016, July 2nd, on the campus of the University of Tennessee at Martin. They received over 300 applications this year and only selected 52 students. The invitation includes a full scholarship from the Tennessee Department of Education to cover her tuition, housing, and meals while she is there. She will be receiving six hours of college credit. She will be taking classes in political science, music in our time, art history, English III, philosophy, and history. In the afternoons, they will have sessions about digital art, using textbooks, and will design their own yearbook for the season. So, it sounds like she's going to be busy those days. We would like to honor her by presenting her this certificate. Next, we would like to recognize a Greymore High School student, Toby Lynch. Lynch, is he here? Lynch? If you'll come forward here. Mr. Bradshaw, the coach of the wrestling team in Greymore. Again, I have a little something to say about you. Please don't. After a long weekend of wrestling at the state tournament, Greymore High School state medalist is Toby Lynch, sophomore. He placed third in the state in the 220 weight class in the T double S double A state tournament. We are very proud of him. Dr. Osmond is also here to recognize him. We congratulate him and his effort.
Congratulations. Coach Bradshaw, would you like to say a little something about the wrestling team in Greymore?
I'd like to thank you all for being here. You know, if you're going to start wrestling coaching, it's good to take on a team that's already gone to state for year four. Take full credit. It's a thing I'll say to you though about this family that Toby's part of, it's part of the twin, and always told Toby, "I can do this that much better." Both him and his brother both wrestle pro bowling at the time. Tanner, last year, is a freshman, made it to state individually. His brother this year, his brother had the glory this year. Both of them lost weight, even though we think of wrestling as being an individual sport, both of them lost weight so that we could add on that. A guy at heavyweight position, that's what got us in position to go to state as a team. Just tremendous identification, this young man. As a heavyweight, he wrestled people that are three pounds heavier than him, and he brought him down like David did Delia. And then at the 225, he's almost unstoppable. Both these young men have a strong, have a strong, I loved it, they're great kids. I lost my father this year, both of them very supportive of that, so beyond being leader on the mat, they're a leader ever since the order. So, I want you to give them a round of applause.
What's he practiced before then, what's he into?
He's practiced for national there, right? Representing the state of Tennessee?
I'm going to Alabama.
He's going to Alabama, so he's going to represent the state of Tennessee, right?
Um, I watch that much.
Oh, didn't he? We're tall for the group now.
Yeah, I'm on the best bits. I practice at beach, and my brothers lead into the Dixie doors.
If Jody Fortune will come up, is she there?
Well, there's a story behind this. Last month, if you remember, we got a little snow in, and we thought that we had asked this young lady to come to the next meeting, but she came to the last meeting, so apparently we can't get together. But we did recognize her at that time, and I will read her plaque and recognize her there, and we'll make sure that she gets this. Jody Grant Fulton, East Robertson High School, in recognition of your perfect score on the 2015 T-Cap running assessment. We would like to recognize her, and perhaps we can get her here at some point in time to come out and connect, but we do outstanding, very outstanding two of the five, Robertson High School student and Robertson County student. So, give her a hand.
Ms. Doris, I've owned seven students in the state, I think. I think, I think it's the calendar.
It's not in here, but I think, I think that's right. I'm not going to be on first speaker, but I do have one more thing. And we have a coach in Robertson County that has decided certainly to continue teaching, we're very happy about that, but he has decided to quit coaching after a very long career. We've already recognized him once tonight, but we're going to talk a little bit more about him now, and I'm going to let it sit there because we're going to say lots of things about him. So, I laid a sweat in the chair. I met Pat, and I asked him a moment ago, I think we decided somewhere around 1986, when I was teaching at East Robertson, and he came to East Robertson, became assistant coach for Billy Nolan, for those who follow those coaches and remember those names. And he was assistant coach, and we were the old school where their name really is now. And I met Pat, and he was much younger, he had more hair, it was dark brown, and he was, had a lot of energy. Pat has always been a hard worker. He's an excellent history teacher. Over the years, he has, he stayed at East Robertson, head coach for several years, took a little break for a while, became a painter, came back and went to Wyeth House Heritage High School, and he's had a very wonderful career, as he did at East Robertson. So, I'm, some other people are going to talk about his coaching, but I'd like to talk just a moment about him being my friend, his wife Tracy, his daughters Kelsey, Emma, Josh being the oldest son. Wonderful family, good friends, could call on them at any time. You know, good people make good teachers and good coaches, so just like to say that about him. Now, I would like to ask Mr. Chris Loggston, who was also at East Robertson at one time, working with coach Grant, and he's going to come up and say a few words. I don't know if he got paid off to keep it short or what, but we'll see what he has to say.
I am going to keep it kind of short, and I promise that I would not turn this into a eulogy, simply because he will be teaching across the hall from me hopefully for quite a while, and he will wear me out, pick one up too much. I don't want to make a roast either, so I just want to just be as nice up out of the can. I started at East Robertson in the year 92, 93. Didn't know anything about football, but when I think back, I knew football because I watched it a lot. I hadn't played it since the eighth grade, and Mr. Ballard said, "If you want to help coach football," and I said, "Yeah, I should do it. I know everything there is to know." I got there, and Pat just immediately took me in. He allowed me to make mistakes, he picked on some, deserved it, but when it came to me, anyway, it felt like a family. We were a family. When I was at East Robertson, for those years, I had Pat Brown and Johnny Moore and Ms. Doris, and it was, it was family. I mean, we were, I felt close to everybody, and I love them to this day. Pat was a great coach. I said, I promise you what he was. Pat is a great coach. When I got there, they had gone undefeated, and then the year I was there, we went undefeated. And I would love to have said that I had something to do with it, but I didn't have anything to do with it. I didn't have a clue what was going on. I walked in, he said, "You know what? You can have the receivers. By the way, we don't throw ball. You can have the defensive backs. Oh, by the way, everybody in the defensive backfield run the four or five, don't mess them up." And that was the extent of my coaching that first year. But as we went on, he gave me more responsibility, trust me a little more, and I appreciated for it, and we did things together, we talked together, we, she talked about Tracy. It's just a wonderful experience, and you just assume that when something that goods happens, you just assume your whole life is going to be like that. Every year is going to be the same, just like that. And it was just a great time. I can't even explain it, it was a wonderful time. Think it still did today, but that was just kind of a time you didn't wrap it up, and I hope you can keep it. He saw my daughter, I taught all three of his kids. I wouldn't have anybody else teach him, he was just a beautiful, wonderful man. I coached baseball, and I tried to do things the way, lean or not, it's going to vary. I actually think about you when I coached baseball, that was weird. The thing, the way I approached my kids, the way I talked to them, I'm trying to think of the way you approached your kids when you were coaching down east. And we would, we would end practice worn out, hot, 98 degrees, nasty, and it was just rough. But we would all, you know, say, "Take me." And the kids would take me, and they'd stare right at it, and we talked to them for 15 minutes. And for about 10 of those men, it goes down when I will. Oh, my God, how long? But then you start to realize that you wouldn't talk to them about football anymore. It was 15 minutes of, "This is how you become a man, this is how you rate your children, this is how you can be a good person in society, this is how you just should be." And we kept listening to them, and they respected me. And to this day, everybody that played for him, will tell you that they loved him, and I don't have anything bad to say about him. And I hope that that's what happens when outside to stop coaching baseball. I hope that, I hope that my kids see me that way. I've got lots of stories, this is probably not the place to tell some of those stories. So, I'll just end it this way. You're still going to be teaching across the hall from them, so I'm not going to say anything to embarrass you too badly, but if my son wanted to play football, he's a seventh grader, if my son wanted to play football, I would want to play for you.
Thank you, Mr. Loggston. I would like to ask Ms. Mary Jo Barnes, principal of Wyeth House Heritage High School, to come up and say a few words as well.
So, we talked a lot about East Robertson. Coach Brown has been with us at Peary Beach for 14 years, as our state coach. I'm hearing his team is a coach, he has 144 games in the county today. He was instrumental in moving into our new building for the planning and the development of our outdoor athletic facility. We've mentioned a lot about Tracy, and I think there's just a good parent, and he and his wife spent countless hours meeting and fundraising to ensure that our heritage community had fields to cultivate. We spent a lot of time in the little conference room trying to come up with a plan. Through his efforts, he and a team of committed community supporters equipped at the ball field with bleachers, a concession stand, a press box, and a scoreboard with the estimated prize cap at $324,000. We are excited to announce that we made our last payment this year, paid that off. Coach Brown, we recognize you tonight for your commitment you've made on and off the field, and in honor of Mr. Davis, the legacy that you have left at Wyeth House Heritage. So, thank you very much.
I'm going to ask Mr. Crockett.
I'm going to be sure.
Ask Mr. Crockett to say a few words, and then we'll move on.
Pat and I met each other, we were kids. Our dads were members of the Santa Claus here in Springfield, and we became members of the little club called Dibble Lake, and that's where Pat and I go back to. We were 12, 13 years old, I guess, and we've known each other ever since, and I've been proud of calling him a friend. And I was at Pita West away this week and talking to their, not their board, to some of their directors, and we talked about Pat, and there's not a coach who, that Pat has either coached against, coached with, that's not have the most upstanding words to say about Pat and his character. And I think that, as a parent, even though I don't have any voice, you know, it's that character, wherever you go in the state of Tennessee, they know Pat, and they recognize Pat. Even Murphy Fair, Friday nights, when I ride home from Nashville to Wyeth House White Fog, and Murphy Fair is usually talking about Pat and his hatreds up at Wyeth House. And, you know, that's, that's his name across the state, is his character, and his love for the kids, and his love for his school. And there's been a lot of great people come through East Robertson in order to get where they are, so I'm, you know, that's not a bad thing, but you've been one of the football coaches we've had at Heritage. Everything that you started from, from nothing, to what you've built, especially this last year, going further than we ever have. We owe that to you and the amount that you put together, and the things that you taught these young men. My daughter does that in class, and she has very had things to say about you as a teacher also. And I just appreciate you as a parent and as a friend. Thank you, sir.
So, Coach Brown, we'll ask you to come forward, if you have some words that you would like to say.
I'm sure most of you are tired of hearing about me, but I'm tired of it. When Mr. Davis asked me if I wanted to say something, obviously, he didn't know how long-winded I could be, and of course, Coach Loggston, all right, that's your end on that secret, and a lot of good people in this room that have impacted me over the years, and I appreciate everything you did mentoring. Ms. Doris was a great mentor at East Robertson, and she actually took care of my babies when they were little, and that's why when we think about family, we think about the relationships you make as teachers and coaches. Coach Loggston, some of your other stories, I fell from a ladder when I was painting about 26 feet, and I was in a halo, didn't do much, and he shows up at my doorstep with two of the worst movies in the world in his hand, and I think maybe some fort runs and a coke. And so, we watched all these stupid movies, and so he was always good about being there for me. Stone, he actually doesn't know this, or might, he might not know this, but he, we knew each other a lot before we were in Dibble Lake, because he was this big bruising fullback at East Robertson Junior Pro, and I think I probably ran over a few times behind him. I don't like to admit to that, but probably the only time I did, so. But anyway, I appreciate everything that you guys do, I appreciate being recognized. My family is very important to me. My wife cannot be here tonight, she has got an important meeting with her work, and she's kind of mad at me if she's not here, but I appreciate everything she does for me. Of course, my mom and dad, they were instrumental in getting me to this point. I still have a passion for the sport, I still love the sport, I still like being around the players, but I didn't have the passion every day these last couple of years, and I'm not going to cheat a kid by not having that. The new coach, Coach Hunter Hicks, he'll do a great job, and he's also, he's going to allow me to kind of hang out and be that old guy in his corner every once in a while so I can say stuff that's really old and stupid, probably, but thank y'all very much. Appreciate those faces, thank you.
Chairman, members of the board, fellow participants, psychos, all of its recognition, getting our board meetings and keeping our mission, it starts out with students and their achievement. Must be, must be the focus of our every meeting, our every plan, our every decision. And that's why I enjoy so much having these students come up here and be recognized for the work that they do, the awards that they earn, the performance, all about, so we're continuing to do that. The personnel report, first of all, certified, signed by the House, we have nine leave of absence, three retirements, four resignations, one transfer, and two new hires, for a total of 19 actions. And on classified side of the House, we have four leave of absence, five retirees, one deceased, and seven resignations, and three transfers, and 16 new hires, for a total of 36 personnel actions. The individual that was deceased, I believe, I'm right about this, was a bus monitor that was shown, no, there was no show, had a heart attack in the accident. So, that concludes the personnel report, so if you have questions.
Any questions? We'll move on to the expense comparison report.
The expense comparison report is on January 31st, and it shows that this month, we are at 57 or 49 percent of revenues received as compared to 57 or 19 percent received this time of last year. It shows that expenditures were, we're at 50.69 percent of our budget this year, this time last year, we were at 52.52 percent of our budget this year. Also, property tax is 56.87 percent this year, last year it was 57.20 percent. And this is as of January 31st, and I asked Ms. Flyman, Ms. Bullman, why the money was collected in February, so in February, we collected $6,2774.48. If you look at our budget today, we're just about $200,000 shy of reaching our budget goal for property tax, which is better than steadily received back plus some or should. So, $296,599.69 short in precious dollars for property tax. Sales taxes, this year, we are at 50.80 percent of our sales tax revenue in, and this time last year, we're at 50.45 percent. When you notice the number, the numbers show that we have $5,333,482.86 this year as compared to $4,893,379.52. The percentages are what we, is what we put against our total, I mean, it was budgeted, and that's why they're really high. Electricity, we are 59.27 percent this year as opposed to 61.94 last year. Diesel fuel, we're at 34 percent this year, or we're at 54.69 this time last year. Gasoline, 36.87 percent this year as opposed to 38.55 percent last year. And insurance coverage. And insurance, of course, is 54.44 as compared to 55.30. We are doing better than just, as I could say at this point in our budget this year. So, that concludes my report. As such, your questions?
Any questions? Our next item is approval of General Payne's pension amendment.
Madam Chairman, there is a budget amendment that is in her pocket. It has several items that will disprove the money around in the budget to make sure it balances line items for the year. But we also have one big line item there and that is the furnace that was at Springfield Middle School and the one at the wood all that were replaced. Have we not, if we don't make this budget, then that's all gotta come out of the maintenance parking project. People haven't even money left to do anything else. So, that's why I'm doing it. But right now, we approve the budget. So, all this is a valid budget.
Motion's been made by Mr. White. Is there a second?
Second.
Second of Mr. Payne. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor of approval of the budget amendment, make it known by saying aye. Aye, aye, no, motion passes. Okay, we'll move to approval of board policy revisions on first reading.
Okay, Madam Chairman, we started this process several months ago. Bringing all of our board policies current with new statutes and the federal laws and rules are, it's something that we're doing differently in that we are now part of the policy development process from Tennessee School Board Association. And so, what they do is they develop basically a recommended policy and they bet that against all of the state laws and federal laws to make sure that we are in compliance in adopting policies. I think six sections, Ms. Mason, I think we have to do. So, what we ask you all to do is to do it in two chunks at a time. So, this month, I'm asking you to approve on first reading, section one and section two. And you'll approve second reading on that next month. At the same time, you will approve on first reading, sections three and four. And by June, we will have these policies in place, ready to go forward over the next year. That's the process that we're trying to follow. Our staff has vetted these policies and gone through each department, its personnel, HR gone through, if it's finance, finance department's gone through. The first section is about board responsibilities. We've gone through that one. Ms. Mason and I have the, so we are having our staff fill us things that they think need to be tweaked because these policies, some of them are generic and they sometimes have to be tailored to meet our specific needs here in the district. So, we have done that for you and we recommend that if you approve on first reading, if there's something that you feel like needs to be amended, you can do that on second reading.
Do you want to add anything to that, Ms. Mason? Okay.
I think Mr. Davis covered everything. I would just say that for section one and section two, there was a very thorough review. Section one was covered by Mr. Davis, James Marshall, Dr. Causey, and myself. Our entire finance office reviewed the fiscal management section. Section two, Shima Clyner, Diane Pearson, Linda Howell, and Dellic Jones. All of their suggestions went to TSBA and TSBA has approved them as maintaining legal compliance. So, those tweaks have been made to bring them in line with that specific district.
So, do we have a motion for approval of section one and two on first reading?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to go ahead, if we could approve all of them on first reading in that I even talked at the end of the day. Just the minor changes in wording and so forth that take place on most of it, I'd like for us to approve them all on first reading.
You say all?
All. Section one and two.
Okay. Kind of been all six. It's all me.
Now, the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second of Mr. Hard. Any other questions or discussion?
I would like to say, just for the benefit of the people that are sitting out there, please don't think that we're doing this on the spur of the moment. We have had these policies in front of us since the middle of January.
January 16th.
Okay.
You received the policies and in November, like I remember, we listed the policies.
And so, I just didn't want anybody to think that we were doing this just haphazardly because we've had them and we've studied them. I really like how TSBA, if there's a law that goes with it, they've noted that on the policies and so I think we're pretty good there. Any other say?
All those in favor of approval of board policies, section one and two on first reading, make it known by saying aye. Aye, aye, no, motion passes. So, the next month, we'll look at these for second reading and we'll do section for the first reading. Okay, we'll move on to approval of proposal for intervention elective focus.
Members of the Board, as you are well aware, Tennessee diploma project requires that students complete either an elective focus or program study in career technical education as part of their diploma requirement. And what the state also designates certain elective focuses in math and science, humanities, and defined arts. They also provide us, our local boards, with the flexibility to add other focus areas as appropriate. We've done so in the past with Home My Business, we've done it with R O P C, and also our dual enrollment classes. As you know, next year, the response intervention is going to be fully implemented at the high school. That means that students will be, have the option or will be recommended to take intervention classes, tier three intervention classes in mathematics and also language arts. It's the concern of some teachers is that if they're taking, if their schedule is full of these, or not full, but have these classes involved, meaning these classes, they don't, they would not have the opportunity to earn their elective focus or participate in a program study. With your approval, this would allow students to get the extra credit, the extra support that they need through the R T I classes while still needing the requirements for graduation. Students can either earn full credit or half credit in these tier three math and English intervention classes. So, I'm recommending that the board consider adding an intervention elective focus option for high school students to run.
Read that request.
I'd like a motion, Bill.
Thank you. I'm undecided question. Is there a second? I will second that motion. Right now, do we have discussion or any questions from up the block?
I guess I have a question about, this has nothing to do with schedule and it has nothing to do with periods and blocks and nothing like that. Because I really want to wonder about that. I just wanted to make sure.
It simply allows students to leave these intervention classes and if they're free, you just have to be at least 45 minutes in your rate. So, they don't really get in the 30 minutes of extra time and support that all schools have. The state has issued the course numbers, so they're official course numbers and they do get credit for it. But as of right now, they don't count, they count it as elective, but not as your elective focus. So, students may have to take a math intervention class and a P L A intervention class. But this just allows them to get that support that they need and also meet their graduation
Any other questions? All those in favor of intervention, elective focus proposal, make it known by saying aye. Aye, aye, no, motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to the protection of facilities. We've had approval of projected bid for A B A compliance projects.
Madam Chairman, members of the Board, what I'm gonna ask you to do is reject the bid that came in, the bid in front of you. And we, there was a Joe Haddick here from Civil Site Engineering talking about that. We bid out all of the finance specifications that were assigned to this farm to address the A B A budget issue in three of our schools. When we did that, we were anticipating giving quite a few bids on it. And I think the projection that was given to the board was some actually less than what we have here. So, I met with Joe and I asked him to do some value engineering. In other words, there's some areas where we can use the system stone and not put any more stone in. We can use asphalt as opposed to using concrete and lower the cost or at least change the specifications to where they're cheaper for less price. Also, top of the chimney fence, the possibility that we could actually bid these in four different quadrants for a duty and get some local bidders interested in doing maybe one, couldn't do them all. There's some people in Robertson County that have the ability to do these projects, but they may not have the ability to cover a bond for all the work for all of them. So, we want to look at that aspect of it too. So, I asked Joe, and the bid came in, $449,530. That's way, we think over this thing, that's way over price. And the fact that we only had one bidder, I just don't think that's something that we were gonna send to the county commission and say, we've got this one bid. And so, we want to get additional bidders and we want to modify the finance specification for this. And at the same time, we asked him to go look at the other schools that were not addressed in the initial review. And he has done that. So, we asked him to do that and he has completed that work now. And what we would like to do is just put it out there all at one time. So, like, was the bid on, I don't wanna bid on one particular school, say it would be East Robertson. And that's the only one bid on that they can do that. Or if they want to bid on all of them, they can do that. So, they'll have an option to do it, for which way they'd like to do that. There is a set of plans that are in front of you this evening that have all of the schools, all, I think they're paid up, seven of them. So, I'm asking first of all, that you reject the bid that was submitted, because number one, the only bid, number two, it was way over the budget.
So, do we have a motion to reject this one bid? So, there's a second?
Second.
Aye, aye, no. Okay, motion passes. Now, we want to make it to approval to re-dead.
Yes, I'm asking the Board to allow us to put these projects back out on the street. They already bid. Joe, if you'd like, Madam Chairman, to your approval, to have them addressed, the Board as to how that process works, oh, we really do need to get this project to solve itself.
Good evening. Mr. Davis pressed on, we're on the one bid. Up until 36 hours before the bid's given the first time, I know three bidders were paying on them submitted. I think it just boils down to they get to do all three projects, local Springfield area contract. That being said, the price that was submitted came from a general contractor who was probably talking to the major contractors. We feel we can do a lot better. Some D E I's. Also, we'll include making it that the Board can select a contractor for each individual site, which you'll probably, I would say would help. I mean, you'd probably end up as a parent organization or a parent of one of the schools who's in the industry one way or another and say, hey, we can help out here. We can bid on one school, you know? And it'll give you the option to select a contractor for that particular school and then you don't have to worry about submitting for the other schools. So, what we are adding, this will be improvements to Springfield Middle School, Jill Burns High School, Gray Rider High School, and White House Heritage. In addition to Cooper Town Middle, Springfield High, and East Robertson, I believe.
Any questions for?
I just got one question. It's just because I know, I only know the real setup from the one school because, you know.
That's real.
So, like, when you do, when you do the sidewalks, or high comp sidewalks, okay, from the visitor's side of Heritage to the construction and our two restaurants, is there enough room left there that it won't interfere with, say, they put a tractor on there in a couple of years and things like that? That was only, that was only thing that a couple people were worried about to make sure. Just a couple of places, it looks like it's pretty close to the assistant building now to where, like, if they ever do put a tractor there, that, you know, that sidewalk would have to be.
We can look at how a tractor laid and it goes to the brakes and it's put on the outrays and it would turn.
That was, that was one question that came up, and the coaches and so forth up there.
Any other questions?
On Springfield, where you're showing the sidewalk here in the middle, that building's been, can't get a hand, is that, does that solve that problem?
It would. It would, were timed at the existing gate on the west end of the building and running it up to the building. We're actually doing the same thing at Heritage. Issues with it right there.
So, we did, we did find, in very hard to pair the skill.
Yeah, there's a, there's a little bit everywhere. I mean, there's a couple of schools where we'll just re-strike some accessible parking spaces and put some sidewalks out there. For instance, the Springfield Middle on the west side of the Humble Church, we need to add a ramp. There's no ramp here at this, on the east side. So, kind of off the Blue Church, you have to walk all the way around the field to get
Any other questions?
How long, Joe? Once we've put it out to bid typically, two weeks?
I think with seven sides, probably one year, at least three weeks will be it. We should be ready or survey or button it up to the last of the schools. We should be ready to put it on the street by the end of next year. I'd say about mid to end April, we'll have the building.
Any other questions? We have a motion to re-dead.
On the Jill Burns side, on the home side, you've got a sidewalk here. Which, it says grass down there, right next to it, all the stoned grass.
No, that's from the survey. I believe it's actually.
It's like that. It's real grass. Should I would do that?
Yeah, so that's one of the areas where we'll try to utilize that existing rocky base, cap it with some different siding and paint it.
I have a motion. Are you ready?
Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Payne and second by Mr. White. Motion's been made, Mr. Payne, and second, Mr. White. Any other discussion? All those in favor of approval, make it known by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion passed. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the state of building.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, we have, they asked a copy of construction report they had marched for, in the now sixteen, that was a contractor, and I think we all heard this earlier from the, the infrastructure committee. We are about three weeks behind schedule on that project because of weather and because of having to uncut the section of soil that was underneath the old existing building. The contractor has assured me that he is going to do everything within his power to make up those things, things, and to get us in there on time. Hopefully, we won't have any bad weather, and we can do that. That's, that's the topic, it's the section that was torn down and is now being rebuilt. The masons, we're scheduled to have them to work today and start laying on the first slab as toward last week. That's, any questions about the topic? The next one is, sidewalks filled out, we have had several things completed over the past month, they put the flagpole up, they've done some more concrete work. I met with that contractor, Mr. Jim, today, and he, he assured me that tomorrow, the people will complete the earthwork around the building and out front, and so it should be, build a go on that disability within the next two weeks. We've got a few minor hazardous items in this building to address. Crestville Elementary, the yard, the owner, with the contractor and with the fire marshal, state fire marshal. State fire marshal, they give us a permanent certificate of occupancy. We do like some hazardous items over there, primarily for those that are outside of the building, they are areas that need some earthwork done, some cracks some. He told me they would start working on that tomorrow. Same contractor is doing this building, is doing that. That's pretty much where we are on our construction projects today.
Okay, any questions on that? And to your director's floor.
Madam Chairman, we see a couple of, three letters, three letters from your plate representative and from Kerry Roberts, in response to the two resolutions that were filed, the last school board made. Both Senator Roberts and Representative Kumar acknowledged receipt of the resolution, and I will tell you that the bill dealing with vouchers is, has been withdrawn according to Dr. Kumar's letter. The, the, but the assessment and how that's going to be accounted this year is still, I think, down there, and I think the legislature has come to approve that we not use that for accountability for teachers this year. So that's something that's still, I have heard in the official, but that's why I've been told to be, is that I attend.
Mr. Davis, I believe that bill has been placed on, on the desk, and it can be brought back up.
The one on voucher?
Yes.
Yeah, he also, he said, he's a sponsor, so he said it's been withdrawn.
Yes, and, and our resolution is against it, so, just so everybody knows where we're staying, I'm not for it, and he is.
He says in his letter, and I just noticed that was pretty telling, when they say the bill has been withdrawn, you know, I really like to see those kinds of things, because I do know it was placed on the desk, and, so I thought it was interesting, because he was a sponsor of the bill. Okay, moving right along, assessment, assessment phase one. Dr. Chris Causey is so excited, the test arrived on Saturday, and Ms. Mason and Ms. Dickerson, a couple of other folks came out here, and really worked hard to get those sorted out so they can be put out to the schools. In fact, Dr. Causey came out on Sunday, and he lent several of them. So we now have our test instruments, and they'll start testing tomorrow.
Six weeks.
From phase one. The assessment process was supposed to be online this year, that did not happen, and we are now back to test the phase one assessment. Phase two, the test will be scheduled for the first week of May, I believe, Dr. Causey. And that is a whole other set of assessment instruments that will be shipped and delivered to our district and distributed to the students. All of our schools have been asked to conduct some tornado drills. We are entering that time of year when tornadoes are rampant throughout the spring, and we want to make sure that our students are prepared, know where to go, to be sheltered in case we were to encounter a tornado or severe weather. Spring is here, and in spring, we spring forward, and this weekend, don't forget to move the clock up. We will also be changing our lights at our schools to make sure that the track lines are concurrently time-changing. Spring break is scheduled for the twenty-first to the twenty-fifth, with the twenty-fifth being the Friday, and we are excited about that, and I'd like to say the kids are more excited than we are. County Commission meets on the twenty-first of March, and the only thing I think that we'll have on that agenda will be the budget amendment. I'm already recorded on the building projects. Mr. Morris will not be here this evening, he'll be back in April, and we'll have a work session, Madam Chairman, before the meeting, to discuss the scope of work and plan specifications for the auditorium and the athletic facilities, before bringing it to the board for your office board. Such as your questions, they can please come up.
I have a question.